Here.
And just to mention that Joe Weiss is excused tonight as he's on official school business tonight at a meeting. Item C, approval of the agenda.
Move. Second.
Any conversations of that? If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving to presentations. So, tonight, item A, we have some student staff and community recognition. And our, oh, just wait. Our first one tonight is Brittany Gorman, nominated by Pete Hopkey and Chris Burghammer. So, Brittany Gorman has served as an early childhood special education instructor for three years at Spooner Elementary School. Brittany is very well respected by the Spooner Elementary School staff and very much appreciated by the families she works with. Brittany is described by her colleagues as extremely positive, always happy and full of energy, and very, very student focused. Brittany will be greatly missed by both students and Spooner Elementary School staff. Brittany plans to head back overseas to serve as accessible needs community in Central Asia. Best of luck, Brittany. Rhonda Carlton, also nominated by Pete Hopkey and Chris Burghammer. Rhonda was hired in 2004 and has been our building's early childhood special education teacher for 18 years, and also the 4K coordinator for four of those. To attempt to sum things up, Ms. Carlton is a wealth of instructional and behavioral knowledge. Rhonda is extremely hardworking, caring, dedicated, and persistent. We both appreciate all of the help Rhonda has given us on our journey. She'll be greatly missed by all. Rhonda plans to retire at the end of the 2021-22 school year, wishing you nothing but good times going forward. Amanda Buck, Amber LaRue, Michelle Cobbey, Kim Madison, Melissa Smith, nominated by Missy Geisregan. So, I'll read. To ensure effective involvement of parents and to support a partnership among the school, the family engagement committee coordinates and conducts family activities at Spooner Middle School. This year, they planned and executed STEAM Night, which brought in 100 people, and Summer Jam, which brought in 242 people. When home and school work together for student learning, students do better in school, stay in school longer, and enjoy school more. When educators and families work together as partners, students win. We can't thank the Family Engagement Committee enough for putting in the long hours and commitment to plan these amazing events for our students and families. Thank you. Chris Walker, nominated by Dennis Shears. All right. Over the past 30 years, Mr. Chris Walker has provided countless hours of instruction to students at Spooner Area School District. He has worked many sporting events, covered prep periods, gone out of his way to help other staff and students in need. Mr. Walker has made incredible impact on the students he has taught, and he'll be greatly missed by all of us at Spooner High School. We wish him only the best during his retirement. Congratulations. Bob Thornley, nominated by Dennis Shears. Well, I can read slowly. Mr. Thornley has provided 34 years of service to our district. He has worked with students in the Performing Arts and ELA department. His knowledge and passion brought years of education and entertainment to our students and community. We have appreciated all of his involvement throughout the years and wish him the best during his retirement. Mr. Frankowitz, nominated by Dennis Shears. This is great. Mr. Frankowitz has been with Spooner Area School District for the past 28 years. He was a teacher by example instead of just his words. His teamwork, wisdom, and knowledge will be deeply missed by all. We give him our best during his retirement. Thank you so much. Mr. Burghammer, is this you? All right. I'm trying to focus. Mr. Shears, nominated by the Spooner High School staff. Come on up. Mr. Shears inspires staff and students to grow and to achieve clear and concise goals. He leads with grace, empathy, and compassion, creating a safe and respectful environment where relationships are valued. He's always thinking of what is best for staff and students, showing that everyone in our building is cared about and appreciated. We'd like to show our own appreciation and gratefulness for all Mr. Shears does by presenting him with this award. All right. Awesome. Sound effects, awesome. Item B, if anybody's got a hammer, and we got our referendum project update.
Good afternoon. Give you a brief construction update. Last month at the elementary, main scopes, it took a place at the addition, included flooring, painting, ceilings, casework, cooling doors, door hardware, specialties, and low voltage. This coming month, we are looking to turn over the addition on Friday. Pre-construction site prep work will take place this week. And then, some of the projects will be starting over the next month when school's out, will be fire alarm replacement, playground upgrades, gym floor refinishing, replacement of windows, upgrades to parking lots, existing office to new music room renovation, new electronic signage, and IMC renovation. For the middle school, similar scopes were completed at the middle school, as was the elementary. That addition is also going to be turned over this Friday. Then also, pre-construction site work for prep work will take place this week. Several projects are starting June 27th, which follows the conclusion of summer school this month. At the high school, not a whole lot's been taking place over the school year, but starting this month, lighting retrofits, they'll start to take place at the high school next week. And then, once again, several additional projects will start June 27th, and that's largely to align with the middle schools. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Have a good evening. Thanks for presenting. So, we're gonna receive that and place that on file. Items, item C, discuss future operations and financial contingencies, and Mr. Aslan will take some more.
There it is. All right. So, good evening, everyone. The title of this presentation is not a typo. We are looking out, looking a year out and beyond, really trying to develop a strategy, an approach, and some contingencies as we look at the district's finances going forward. So, well, I'll take you back just a handful of months ago. It was difficult to produce a balanced budget for 2022-23, as you'll recall. We had no increase in the revenue limit during the course of the current biennial budget, no safe harbor for the year of COVID enrollment loss that all districts experienced statewide, and Spooner continues to be on the receiving end of a campaign of continued cuts in general aid at the state level, all leading to unprojected shortfalls that caused us to have to take some fairly significant actions to produce a balanced budget. As we prepared for 2022-23, we saw increasing costs and high inflation. Simply said, everything costs more, in that we had to use the lion's share of our federal SIR funds that had been allocated to the district to balance next year's budget. Casting forward for the 2023 through 25 Wisconsin Biennial Budget, this will be among the largest items that the legislature takes up in Madison in the next session. There are many, many matters that will need to be decided at that level before a budget will be produced. All these decisions impact on the SASD's finances, and they include a distribution of a surplus that has now reached approximately $6 million, $6 billion, including the rainy day fund. They will need to make some decisions about the revenue ceiling after freezing that for the previous two years, and decisions about per pupil and categorical aids will have a very significant impact on our districts and other districts across the state. So, as we look at the timeline, history tends to be an excellent teacher, and it certainly is in the case of biennial budgets and the legislature. The past two biennial budgets have not been produced until the month of July, and this last one was in the very late days of July. And that is a challenge. So, the impact on the SASD, you know that you have to, as a board, approve teacher contracts in the month of April. So, some time hangups. So, and I want to be very careful as I say this, so that we're on the same page. If everything stayed as is, okay? So, no movement in the revenue limit, all those things that we've talked about, the district would project a shortfall for the 2023 fiscal year, 23-24, of approximately $1.75 million. To balance that without those revenues would require significant cuts in programming and would impact staffing across the district as well. So, as we look at 23, 24, and beyond, I think it's essential that we take on the goal of sustaining the quality educational programming and operations that we have in this district despite being in the face of declining state aid, and that will continue, rising nationwide inflation and significant revenue cap constraints. Again, history is a teacher. If the revenue caps are moved, we know that that movement won't be significant, and in a district like ours that receives so little equalized aid, we know that the levy is where 69 cents on a dollar of the cost of education comes from. So, contingencies and considerations. You know, the equalized aid formula, just really unlikely to change, and it has more to do with politics than anything else, but as we've discussed before, this was a formula that was put into place in 1993, so almost 30 years ago. Didn't work particularly well then, and for districts that were responsible spenders like Spooner, all that time ago, almost 30 years, we continue to have to operate with one arm tied behind our back as we look to provide our students with the best possible educational experiences that we can. State surplus, as I stated earlier, $6 billion, including the rainy day fund, no plan for distribution, none. We know that there are many competing interests, and K-12 education is about one of them. Increasing inflation. So, you'll recall a few months ago, the board was faced with a really difficult decision of what kind of pay increases to give staff in the face of increasing inflation. And you'll recall that the CPI, Consumer Price Index, at that time for contracts that began on July 1st, 2022, was 4.7. So, we can't know for sure what contracts will be, you know, a year from now or two years from now, but what I can tell you as fact is based on the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, contracts beginning on October 1st, 2022, that CPI index has raised a 5.56%. So, we can be confident that we'll continue to see rising inflation for the foreseeable future. It's important that we use the time that we have available to plan. Again, 10 months from now, next April, we'll be back to talk about contracts, and it's important that, not only that we have a plan in place, but that we are taking action. So, certainly, increased advocacy and communication with our legislators are important, and we know that in the geographical territory that the SASD encompasses, two of our three elected officials at the state level will be new in November. So, it's important that we all are making those connections with those legislators and letting them know that the state's investment in the education of the children of the community of Spooner is not fair and it's not equal. It's incumbent on them to address the shortfall. When we look at our students receiving less than $300 of general aid per student, while students in secondary voucher schools, those schools receive more than $8,000, that is a disparity that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed at the legislative level. So, I come to you this evening saying that the best course of action that I can give you at this time for consideration is an operational referendum. And should you decide to develop that plan going forward, I would encourage you to look at it during the April 2023 election. In that, and tonight, we're just sharing information, so no decisions to be made. Just an important date to remember would be, should the board decide to go in that direction, December would be the month that you would pass the resolutions for that referendum, and those that have been on the board, you know that we were there just a couple of years ago for the building referendum. It is incumbent on our district, and unfortunately, we're not getting much help at the state level, that we work together to maintain our quality programming and operations. It also provides us some opportunities to look at some things like that we have not had a chance to do in the past. So, some opportunities within this, but not something that we certainly would want to have looked at, but unfortunately, that's where we find ourselves. You have an additional document, and I'm not seeing it in this presentation, but...
It was separate.
You have a document in there? And, you know, what that document shows you is what the levy rate was. So, again, the levy rate is the amount that the district, the district portion of property taxes are for, per $1,000 of property value. So, last year, $9.59 per thousand. This year, we saw a pretty significant decrease, $8.66. And we know in most of the municipalities across the district, in many cases, property owners, school portion of the property tax decreased. What you can see on this chart is what an ex, what an operational referendum would do to that levy rate. So, you can see, you know, a gamut there, what the impact would be. I do want to just let everybody know that should that be the direction that the district went, that we would not look to levy one more dollar than we needed to. So, if the time came, and that biennial budget or some sort of assurances were not in place, and the board said we're gonna do a referendum, and we held that vote in April, we would look at a maximum amount, and if there was any movement, any movement in the revenue cap, any movement in categorical aids, or if this would be the year that the equalized aid formula would get a revision, we certainly would apply that before looking to use referendum dollars. Questions me? Yes?
Has the tax levy for this upcoming year or the tax rate that current year been set? Or my ignorance on that is...
Sure. So, it is in place for this fiscal year. As a board, in November, you will come together and approve a levy rate at the annual meeting and budget hearing. Other questions for me? Yes, sir.
Regarding the upcoming elections and new representatives that we're going to have, have you reached out to those folks or any of those people, and have you had conversations? Or is there something the board members should take on?
You know, I think it's, so, yes to all of the above, Mr. Johnson. I have had an opportunity to talk with one candidate, and I'm trying to make connections with another one that would be representing our region. I think it's important that everybody put that on their to-do list, and I mean everybody. You know, we've been talking for five years now, as we put budgets together, about how inequitable the equalized aid formula is. And now, it's to the bone. It really is. You know, we're through the muscle and to the bone with this, and it's, you know, it's a sad state of affairs, but, you know, there are a significant number of districts in the state that have, that had to come to the same position, and some have had to do that for a number of years. So, you know, we certainly want to give our input and make our desires and our needs known in Madison. We also need to know that, you know, the cavalry's probably not on the way for us. So, the solution to our challenges will, in all likelihood, be addressed in the most significant manner within the boundaries of our district. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll receive that and place that on file. Moving to item D, achievement gap reduction program report. Mr. Burghammer, you're already up there. All right, excellent.
I was eager.
Yeah, I can see that.
All right. Mr. Burghammer, talking about the achievement gap reduction program. This would be the end of the year update. Again, just to, you know, same stuff we went through a little bit in January, but the AGR program is a grant program, which allows a participating school to meet the obligations of its five-year contract by implementing one of the three strategies or a combination of those strategies. One-to-one tutoring, instructional coaching, and maintaining 18:1 ratios. The AGR program requires a participating school to create performance objectives, including the reduced achievement gap between low-income students in that school and students in the same grade and subject statewide. And we're also required to give our findings and data to the board, which we did in January, and now we're doing it now in June. Again, to recap, the focus of 21-22, we identified the vocabulary as an area of need of improvement. Students need a better understanding of grade level vocabulary building-wide. Improvement in this area would give our students a better opportunity to be successful. Many of the critical verbs are used in the directions and questions in the very standardized tests and vocabulary and verb understanding are fundamental skills. This is part of our building-wide SOO, as you'll recall, and we made significant improvement from the beginning of the year, which we were scored as an elementary at about 9%, and we ended up at right around 30% at the end. So, again, pretty good improvement from that standpoint. Again, just to, you know, bring things back, our building action plan, we had daily reading, when and math times, the grade level critical verb learning, which we just talked about, and the actively researching a new ELA resource, which you guys have heard plenty about and obviously has been adopted, and then continually supporting our staff through professional development opportunities and collaboration. So, you can see at kindergarten, we have broke down into reading and math, and rhyming was the reading one, and in January, they're at 80%, and in June, they're at 86%. Again, these tests were given, you know, in May more so, so they were obviously a good improvement there. In math, you can see that the number identification in kindergarten, we're at 65% in math, and at 85% in June. And then, I asked each grade level just to, because inside a FastBridge, there's boatloads of data that you can find, and so I just asked each grade level to pull another positive just for the board to see some other aspects of the education process. So, the number sequencing was one thing that the kindergarten looked at and thought that was a positive that they'd like to mention. First grade, they talked about the sight words as their measurement for FastBridge, 36% in January, and an increase to 41% in June. Math at 57%, which was decomposing, and in June at 77%. So, just, you know, an eyelash short of 80%. And again, their positive was talking about the skill of place value, which was an increase, and they felt that was a positive they'd like to mention. Second grade was A reading, phonics and fluency, 46% in January for second grade, up to 49% in June. And in math, A math, which is general math, they're at 74% in January and up to 76% in June. The skill of phonemic awareness at 40% in the fall and just short of 80% in the spring, and the skill of place value at 48% in the fall and then 93% in the spring. Third grade, again, they looked at, or we looked at A reading as a measurement that we looked at in FastBridge, 45% in January, 45% in June. And math, again, the A math, the general math, 59% in January and a slight decrease to 57% in June. And again, looking at that same measurement as a positive that second grade did, they went from 76%... they went from seventy-six percent in the fall to eighty-nine percent in the spring, which would be a, a reading benchmark. And then, again, the number of students performing the benchmark and skill value went from, or skill place, or skill of place value increased from eighty-three, or eighty percent to ninety-three percent in the spring. So that was data. And again, we just looked at kindergarten, first, second, and third grade because that's what the AGR focus is. So looking ahead, um, when you get the data, um, you start making a plan and you start looking at some things that you think, uh, could potentially address the plan. Again, going into next school year, we will have, uh, the, you know, the new ELA resource and with professional development for our staff. Continued professional development, well, let me back that up a little bit. That would also, obviously, as you guys know, would include four K through fourth grade. Continued professional development focused on classroom management. And then our continued PLC process. Implementing a daily SEL focus in each classroom. That will be called, uh, Character Strong. And that's something that we feel is important for our, our students to, uh, to make those gains in academic. We need to make sure that their social-emotional, um, learning is, is as consistent as we can make it. Addressing a couple of issues in, hopefully in the math as far as third and fourth grade. Again, we're gonna look at the modern classroom instruction. And, um, and that would be just for math instructions in grades, grades three and four. Tech time programming, that'll be add, added to the special rotation. Just give the students a little bit more, or a little more opportunities to work on the various tools that they may see in the, uh, in the testing. And then also just with typing and Google Docs, Google Slides, those types of things. And that will be the focus in grades two through four. And then, um, the SMART programming added for grades four, K through one. Back in my day when I was an educator, my previous district, SMART was called Boost Up. And that was one of those things that, uh, that was really good for our young kids as far as the development of fine, fine motor and large motor skills along with, uh, the, uh, just the brain-based learning and all of those types of things. So I feel like we've got a pretty good plan. Trying to address some of the things that, uh, that we thought, hey, you know what? This is an opportunity for us to, uh, hopefully improve next year. When we were here in January, I think of the eight components, I think we had met our goal with one. And now we're just short of, you know, it's seventy-seven and seventy-six percent or whatever. Just short of hitting four of eight of those goals. So, um, the improvement's being made. Teaching staff's working hard. And like I said, I think we've got a good plan in place going into next year. And then just like always, you know, we wanna thank, uh, give a thanks. The SES staff would like to thank all our families for the opportunity to work with you and your child. We also thank you for your support and patience throughout the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We also want to thank all families for taking the time to fill out our end-of-the-year survey. We had gotten some valuable, uh, um, information from that, which, uh, again, we're going to, we use that information to help us looking ahead and also to guide some of our efforts in decision-making going into next year. As we look forward to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're excited to bring our kids to, uh, to the new building and the playgrounds. Excited about our new ELA resource and all the other fun, exciting changes the new year brings. And we will continue to do the best job we can preparing our children for a successful future. Any questions?
I guess I just want, um, and I'll try to make it make sense, but you know, the overall benchmarks through third grade have been up to eighty percent of student proficiency at that, you know? But that see, and then you look at some of the staggering statistics, or it seems like maybe we're not doing well with, for example, the third grade, reading and math, forty-five, forty-five, and then fifty-five, fifty-sevens. But the comments show, or the positives show that you're actually achieving in some things. So I'm just wondering why such a broad level goal to say that everyone, eighty percent of the students should be there when, in all reality, there are successes. But you're, you know, the, what you're measuring maybe doesn't show that there's some good growth.
No, I think that's fair enough. And every year we go back. And so like next year during our in-service in the fall, we'll look at some of those, potential benchmarks and, and potential areas that we want to put our focus on. And then we'll look at, at, you know, the percentages that we think would, uh, you know, would, would make sense for us here in Spooner. So yeah, we have a little leeway in some of those areas. And so we'll, we'll revisit that every fall, kind of revisit what our AGR goals would be, um, based on, you know, each grade level.
Thank you, I was just.
Nope, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, so just, just wanna follow up on your last comment. So as you look at not benchmarks, but your goal that you set, based on what you're seeing for student data, mid-year and end-of-year, do you anticipate carrying on with the same broad goal next year? Uh, as you chip away at, at, um, trying to close that gap of percentage of students that are, that are meeting your benchmark? I'd take you up maybe to slide number one or slide number two, Mr. Burghammer. So yeah, those pieces, looking at vocabulary and verb understanding. Those, I guess that, that would be the two areas of focus that I ask you. You know, is, is your data such that you're gonna look to work on those again next year? Too early to tell, or, or, uh, can you give us a little direction on what you see happening in the future with that?
No, I think that, uh, I think as a staff, um, we found that after we had gotten into this process a little bit more with the, uh, with the critical verbs and, uh, and assessing those verbs on a three-times, um, a year basis. I think that, uh, as time went on, we bought, I, I think there was a lot more buy-in. I think as we saw the percentages increase and started the under, or kept understanding why we were doing it. And then, um, then staff started developing better processes, especially after we had gotten through, we hadn't done it before. So after we got through January and we revisited the SLO process, um, in the mid-year, we were able to relook at goals and it also gave us a good opportunity to reflect on, here's what we need to do. We need to ramp this up a little bit more on a daily basis. Maybe we need to do verbs per week. It just kind of made us change our mind and our mindset a little bit on how we wanted to go about this. So yeah, I think January was a great opportunity for us to reflect. At the end of the year, we had seen, hey, you know, we had improved, but in every one of those, uh, SLO reflections from each grade band, it was, boy, this is something we'd really like to do again. Because throughout the process, we, we, we understood that this was good for kids and this is long-term gonna benefit us. So I feel like this is something we're gonna continue, uh, throughout next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Burghammer.
Thank you.
We'll receive that and place that on file. Item E, discuss substitute teacher pay, pay rate increase. Dr. Aslan?
So you'll recall that we put a fairly sizable increase on a temporary basis into play for substitute teachers. As we look into next year, we anticipate that that, uh, will continue to be a challenge to attract substitute teachers just because there's a lot of demand in our region and in a fairly small pool. So to leverage the SASD's position, we are looking, uh, for board authorization to make that hundred-and-fifty-dollar-a-day figure, uh, permanent as we go forward. We know that we can handle it financially and we believe that it'll have a positive impact on attracting substitute teachers here to Spooner, particularly when they're faced with opportunities in other districts. And, uh, they know that not only are they coming to a great school district, but they're gonna be better paid than they are in their neighboring districts as well.
Do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting? Or is there any discussion, any thoughts on that before? Any thoughts, questions? Yes?
Is, is this a temporary, that we're voting on again, or is this a permanent now?
Yeah, we look for this to be permanent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts? All right, do we have a consensus to move this to regular board meeting? All those say aye? Aye. All right, moved. Item G. Oh, excuse me. Item F, discuss student handbook updates. And I believe that will be each of the building principals.
Just, uh, hope everyone's had an opportunity to look at them and principals can field questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for any of the prin- building principals?
No, other than a comment. I'm sure it's already been fixed, but the suggested language in the SES parking still says the south, but it's back. So there's just, it's a little confusion in what it actually should read. Maybe it's already been fixed on a different document, but.
It's on. I guess that, uh, I guess when you, when we look out, look at the layout of the building next year, and I, I apologize, I don't have that information in front of me, but the south next year would be the back, so to speak, if that makes sense. Because with the main office being on the north end, that would be considered the front of the building now. That make?
Well, it makes sense now. I was just picturing it all to be.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any other thoughts or, or questions? All right, do we have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting for the first reading? Yes?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Item G, discuss second reading of volume thirty-one, number one, Neola policy updates, group one. We've all had a chance to look at all those. Is there any questions? If there's none, do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Item H, discuss first reading of volume thirty-one, number one, Neola policy updates, group two. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at those? Yes, all right. Yes? You have a question, comment?
Is this the time that we could have a discussion? I'm looking at, uh, policy eighty-three-ten. Open records request. When I'm reading that, what I am seeing is, the only thing.
Paul, could you move that microphone just a little closer?
Regarding open records, I think it's well-written. I think that it, um, explains it a lot. And one of the things it does is says that we as board members have to maintain a, a record for our own records. And I'm a little concerned about that, number one. I think that anything that we receive that would be considered a public record could be turned over to our staff to hold as the record for us, that we would not be in a position to... The example would be this. Let's say somebody sends something to my personal email regarding the school district. What I should do is I should take that email, I should respond to that email, telling that person, I am not gonna respond to you using my personal email, but I'm gonna forward this to my school district email address. I will respond with that address. Therefore, I am not tied down to a public record request for my personal emails. Anything you receive in a personal email or on your cell phone could be forwarded to the district through your email so that there's a record. I forward it to the staff using my personal email and you put a copy, copy there. I don't want anyone to ever come to me and say, I want a copy of your personal email. So we should explain this somehow in here that anything you receive that could be considered a record could be forwarded to the school, only if you received it in your personal. If you received it in your email address, by all means, it's already here. It's not my responsibility to control, that's back to the IT people. So that's what I'm trying to do is prevent us as board members from getting tied up in litigation and having to defend yourself. We need to be real clear at the beginning how you should handle it so that we don't get tied up in it. That'd be the first thing. The second topic in here is, um, it talks about the fees. And I've been involved in lots of open records through lots of different places. Anything over fifty dollars, the district can charge for. I also believe that anything under fifty dollars, we should do for free and just forward back to the people as soon as possible. We shouldn't be tied up in waiting for somebody to come up with a thirty-two-dollar check. Just send it to them, be done with it, we're moving on, we don't wanna deal with it anymore. So I would just say that anything under fifty dollars, let's just put in there, it'll be at no cost. Whether it's a video, whether it's a audio, whatever it is, if it's under fifty dollars, it's not worth us to waste our staff time to even send out the invoice. Just give them what they asked for and we're gonna move on. They're happy, we're happy, it's done. So that's the only two points I saw on that, that I would hope that we could address before we approve it. Number one would say, anything under fifty dollars will be at no cost. And encouraging people to forward things through, describe how we're gonna forward through so that the people see the policy so that you're not even gonna come forward and ask me for my emails. You already know how we're gonna handle it. So that was all I was saying.
Is that something that we're able to change or reword for those documents?
Yeah, I think you're, you're in fine shape, particularly for the one regarding fees. I think it's really important for us all to go back to, you know, the training and guidance that Mr. Miller has given us over time. And that is, you know, it's essential that board members and district employees use their district email for district business. So, uh, you know, in the scenario you described, uh, you know, I'd really encourage you if someone sends you something to say, hey, can you please send this to me at my district email and not forward it or anything? On the district side, emails are archived for a long, long time, certainly. Yep, yep, and we just, just know that we have the infrastructure to, to back those up and, and producing something like that is absolutely something we can do. When you use personal email, even to say, you know, even to forward things that are district business, the district doesn't have the ability to archive your own personal email.
But you will be able to rearchive my response to that email.
If, you'll, we'll be able to archive anything that you do with your school district email.
That's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to create a record so that the people would know that I received it, but it's being forwarded to my email and I will respond by my school email. So you'll never get anything back to, to you from my personal email. I understand what you're saying too, it's, it's, we're, we're on the same page. And, and the other topic would be as, as far as fees, I really believe that it, to create trust with the people. We just need to give them what they asked for without creating a burden, financial burden. If it's so small, it's not worth even dealing with.
I, I, I agree with that too, as well.
And I believe, isn't there a state statute, and tell me if I'm wrong, it could be, that states how much or at what point you're supposed to charge for it?
It says you can charge for over fifty, but you can also charge for under fifty.
But, but if we would go back and we would research who charges and what they charge for, that's what I would wanna know. I don't, I agree, it should be over fifty. I mean, if you think about it, I think when I worked at the county, we did over fifty also for public workers. Anything under, we just gave it.
Here's an example. I did one once and they responded back by saying, it will cost over fifty dollars for us to do that. So I said, how much over fifty dollars? So I said, how much over $50? We don't know for sure, but it'll be over $50. So I had to make a decision. Do I want to spend $50, which could be $800? Or do I want, whatever. So I said, I will go ahead and do it. At which that afternoon, they called me up and said, you can come pick your stuff up, it's $28. What they were doing is trying to discourage me from forwarding the requests. So I'm just saying that let's just be nice to the people. If it's under $50, automatically give it to them.
So the policy stated that the cost is $50 or more, that the requister could be billed for. Oh, is that not what the policy say, that if it's $50 or more?
Some, some are billing for as low as $5.75 and they'll even add on the cost of the postage and send you an invoice for $6.23. It's just how some are doing it is what, you can still charge even though it says over. I'm just trying to say, let's just say, anything under, let's just do it. Because like I said, I've been charged for postage for sending out CDs in the mail. Some agencies will do that and some school districts will do that.
Policy says over $5.
The policy says, if you look down lower, it says, the district may require prepayment of fees if the total amount exceeds $5.
So we're charging, we're charging for under 50 then.
Yep.
So if there's consensus, we certainly can work up, uh, uh, some draft language, uh, revision to that paragraph. And we could, we could bring it back for the regular meeting when you'd be, uh, looking to do a first reading.
All right. So is there a consensus, just so I can see a hand raised, is there a consensus to make that draft change?
Just on the fee that we're talking about or also?
Just on the fee. I think the rest of it is more of an education issue on our part. I think Dr. Aslan did explain that to me.
All right. So we do have consensus and then, uh, we'll see that at the regular board meeting for the first draft. Thank you. All right. All right. Thanks. Is there any other questions on the rest of those policies? All right. Do we have a consensus?
One question and then we can move forward. The ones that highlighted, Dr. Aslan, those are the three we will not talk about until July, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a consensus to move the first reading of volume 31, number one, Neola policy updates to the regular board meeting for first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Item I, discuss second reading of employee handbook updates. Uh, everybody's had an opportunity to look at that. Is there any questions? Thoughts, comments? If there's none, do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting for the second reading? Do we have a consensus? All those say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item J is just for information only due to, um, discuss school safety. Just due to the things that have happened in our nation, just want the public to know that we've had some school safety meetings, actually this last week, uh, that I was a part of. Uh, there are a lot of things in the community coming together to look at those things. So it's headed up by Miss, Mrs. Easter again, so we're, we will be having, uh, we'll be having a report soon to be approved here, uh, soon. Um, just in looking at where we are at, this is just something that I would like to just put out there. Uh, due to the things that we are seeing, just due to some of the things that we see even within our school districts or even within our county, just something that I would like to plant the seed for is the potentially to have a resource to look at the possibly, the possibility of bringing a resource officer to, to our schools. And so I'm just planting a seed, uh, just looking at some things as things come forward. Maybe see, because that would be a, an incredible, uh, could be an incredible asset to our school district in dealing with some of the issues that we have faced and I'm guessing will face in the near foreseeable future. So for your information only, just wanted to make sure that you are aware that we had that meeting um, and that the public is aware that we are working and it is a priority for the Spooner School District. If you have any questions for me, uh, please, you know, email me or see me later. But, um, just wanted you to be aware of that. So it's for your information to be put on file. Item K, discuss rollover of activity of accounts.
So as if, uh, we didn't have enough confusing information as we look at the very detailed process of financial management. So each year, uh, school boards are asked to take action on rolling over activity accounts. And activity accounts are carried as liabilities on the district, uh, balance sheet. And they are like that because it is money that the district, uh, it's held under the district name, but it's owed to these different groups. So I know it's a little bit confusing to see all those, uh, negative figures and then see that all the accounts are in good standing. And that is why they're carried as a liability to the district. And, uh, those accounts are all in good standing.
Excellent. Are there any questions?
There's, there's one on the bottom for disc golf. Do we still have a disc golf course or did that come down a couple of years ago? We had that discussion once.
Still have it.
We still have it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board, board meeting? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Item L is discuss bids for athletic training services.
So you recall a handful of months ago, the board indicated that, uh, that the business office should go, uh, put a request for proposals out for athletic training services as the end of our contract with Essentia was nearing an end. So in that, uh, we received two proposals, one from Essentia Health Sports Medicine and one from, uh, Cora. Uh, and those proposals are in there. Uh, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at them. Significant similarities between the two. And within that, you also have, uh, some insights from, uh, Mr. Lucius that he's provided.
Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing that there is none, do we have a consensus to move this to a regular board meeting? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item M, discuss assistant boys hockey coach position. Dr. Aslan?
The assistant hockey coach position is a position that is in the, uh, existing employee handbook. So, uh, just looking for the board's authorization to post that position.
Any questions on that? And do we have a consensus to move that to the regular, or yep, to move that to the regular board meeting to vote? Yes?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Moving right along, item N, the 30, 60, 90 day planning. Everybody's had an opportunity to look at that. Are there any questions? All right. Excellent. Item O, financial updates. Dr. Aslan?
Financial updates for the month of April, 2022. If you look at receipts, some pretty significant receipts during that month. Uh, a significant amount for common school funds. Those are monies coming in from the state. Uh, a couple of different significant food service claims. And, uh, the largest portion coming from Washburn County Lottery Tax Credit and Burnett County Lottery Tax Credit. So, um, on money on hand was, uh, $6,629,134.72. During that same period, there were $1,446, uh, $709.41 worth of expenditures. So the cash balance on hand at the end of April, 2022, $5,182,425.31. If you were to contrast that with, uh, the same time period in 2021, uh, the, uh, there were, uh, fewer receipts at that time. Uh, and the bottom line on cash balance was, uh, $5,017,000, $5,017,904.14. So as you'll see, about a hundred thousand dollars less back in 2021.
Any questions? Everybody good? All righty. Then we have, uh, item P. And that is the approval of the vouchers. And everybody's had an opportunity to look at those. Are there any questions? All right. All those, everybody's good with those? Right. All right. Do we have a consensus to move that forward to the consent agenda? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Excellent. And I believe that moves us to my second page, number three, adjourned. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.